I'd like to call this special meeting of the Edison Public Library Board to order, but the minutes reflect that it is seven oh four P M. Please stand for the public, please.
United States of America and through the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
As required by the Open Public Meetings Act of nineteen seventy five, adequate notice of this special meeting has been provided to the public by notices given to the home news Tribune, Star Ledger and Sentinel posted on the library bulletin boards and website and given to the township clerk's office. Roll call, please.
Ms. Crouch.
Here.
Ms. Bead.
Here.
Ms. Pam.
You.
Mr. DeBusschere.
Here.
Ms. O'Neil.
Excused absence.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Leary.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
And Ms. Massey.
Here.
Have a forum.
Thank you. All right, so because this is a special meeting, we don't have any minutes to approve. And I don't really have much of a report. I just really want to thank all of you for taking time to, you know, attend this special meeting because we really want to get this done. We have, the only reason that we're here is to approve the contracts or and discuss the contracts for the asbestos abatement at the main branch of the library. And as you know, and we discussed it last time, asbestos was discovered when the tiles, there were a few tiles that came loose when they went to remove the existing carpet tile. So those existing tiles, the nine by nine tiles, were installed when the building, that portion of the building was built in nineteen sixty three. So the first item of business that we have is a resolution to approve a contract with hazmat diagnostic for the removal of asbestos on the upper level of the main library, which would be phase one, and the amount is eighty thousand two hundred. Do we have a motion?
I have questions.
And yes, we will do the questions after we do the motion in a second. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, yes, Joe.
The, when the bid was originally made, was the, is this eighty thousand dollars? Is this incorporated into the bid or the the actual bid and the alternate bidding? So what I'm asking is, is that the extra eighty thousand, was this in incorporated into the alternate bid?
Are you speaking about the original bid for the contractors?
Well, when you make, yes, when you make a bid.
Right.
Okay, there's a bid and then there's an alternate. There's a section that's, it's an alternate bid and that's in case of. So what I'm asking is, is it part of the original bid, that it's part of the alternate bid? Or is it part of something that's called errors and omissions? So when they discussed the design, was that design, was that issue discussed? Was that incorporated in the bid or the, or the alternate bid? Or was this something that was overlooked? Oh, the project.
I am not an expert to answer that, but I will tell you that no, asbestos abatement was not part of our contract, our original contract with G Meyer. And the reason why it was not expected because there have been numerous carpets replaced, you know, installed since nineteen sixty three. And there was no issue at that time. So no, there was no, and possibly Joe, you might be able to, and I can't remember your last name, I'm sorry.
Frangios.
Frangios, maybe you would be from our architects, Ayavino, Akari and Ayavino, if you could address why there was no reason to put asbestos abatement in the original bid.
Sure, so as you kind of discussed, I guess you replaced carpet previously. And we are not experts in asbestos, I just want to say that off the bat, we're architects, we don't handle this. But once they started removing the carpet, fragments of the existing tile came up with the adhesive. At that point, that's when we had to call in McCabe Engineering, an environmental engineer who reviews the situation and determines whether or not you need to take these steps that you're going on tonight for the abatement. And according to them, once the fragments of the tile were coming up with the carpet, that requires you to abate the top. So normally in projects we've done it, if you pull up the tile, the carpet tile and the asbestos tile underneath it is in good condition and it's sound, you would just put the new tile directly over it, which you guys have done in the past.
So, so you've been tile pulled up in the past and so not tile over, not carpet over carpet? Is that what she said?
Every time you put carpet down, you pull up the old carpet.
Okay, so that's what was done.
So they laid carpet over this tile and over the years they've pulled up the one carpet, new carpet down. I don't know if it's because, you know, a number of times doing that or just, you know.
So is there no method that when you had the situation that possibly you have tile that could break with the carpet? There's no method of pulling it up or adhesing? Like, I don't know, is there any chemical, any heatings or anything that you could use? So when you pull it up, something like this doesn't happen? I know nothing about this, so I'm just throwing questions out.
No, not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so it's just manually to pull it up and?
You don't know if it's gonna, if the tile underneath is gonna pull up with the carpet until they start doing.
Okay, and there's nothing, like I said, there's nothing you could do?
Once that happens, it throws it into a different, I think it was a subchapter eight with the state, and it's all mandated by the state.
Right.
So the environmental engineer applies or they make their abatement specification, which tells the contractor how they have to remove it and it's all dictated by the state and a whole procedure of how they tent it, air testing, all that is all mandatory.
I'm just asking, I'm kind of surprised that there's no, asbestos is so many buildings, it's country. I'm just kind of surprised there's no process that is, I mean, did they just pull it up? Is there a way to, you know, you know what I'm trying to say, like it's, I'm just, I, that's what I don't understand, like if I have something that I want to be careful and not rip what's happening underneath, I can do, you know, certain methods, I can heat glue up, I can, there's none of that, that.
Sure.
I'm just, again, I'm just curious.
Sure.
Because I, I was in the building when all this was going on at the building ground supervisor. I was there when the carpet guy came in to start his, his part of the job.
Right.
All he did was rip, start one piece of tile and it ripped, ripped up the, the nine by nine. And the minute that happened, he said, we have to stop because it's asbestos and like you have to get the subco, what it, what it goes under. Now we had, that's why we were, that's why we are where we are right now because that happened. And I, and I was there.
The question that I, I have then is, did they just pull carpet up like, or is there a process that?
When I was here.
So it's, it's more, you know.
Yeah, when I was there, he, he pulled up the tile by hand, he did it. He wanted to see how easy the tile was gonna come up and unfortunately he did.
So then that's my, my question is if we knew there was possibly asbestos there, then why do you just pull that up? And I'm, I'm not, I'm just trying to understand the situation because it's gonna cost us like over two hundred thousand dollars. So I'm just trying to figure out.
I don't think anybody, sorry, sorry.
I don't believe that there would be another method. That would be a concern if it was difficult to pull up the carpet tile, you would assume, you know, but if they're easily pulling it up by hand, then the adhesives are not that heavily attached to the top.
Well, that's what they got, with these carpet, with these carpets, like they're, they're squares. And they, they use a, a special glue, so if we had to, say somebody spilled something and we had to replace tile, it was easy enough for us to pull it up. They don't use like a permeating, a, a, I forget what they call it, to be honest with you, but so it's supposed to make the tile easy to pull up. So if I, if I was here and I had to replace the tile, I would do it. And like I said, over there, it, it was just one of those things, this guy picked a spot, he was gonna start, he pulled it up and the minute he pulled it up, the tiles came up with it and he stopped it right then in here.
That's fine, I'm just trying to understand what happened.
I understand, yeah.
We're paying two hundred thousand dollars.
There's something called the errors and omissions clause in the contracts. Does anybody understand that?
But I have a question, when was the last time carpet was laid down in that building?
I, I, it was in the eighties, I believe it was.
Okay, and there was no indication?
Even when they did the additions over there, there was no indications of us to anywhere. I looked through tablets, blueprints and stuff like that to see if I could find anything, you know, that, that there was, you know, asbestos in our buildings. And I found nothing that said anything that when, when they did this addition, we found asbestos and we, they had to do.
Well, if the building was built in the sixties, then you kind of understand that there was possibly asbestos in there.
I understand.
Which I'm guessing.
But is there a testing of the air periodically within the buildings? Because of the age of the buildings?
They, we haven't had it until they start, until they start this, then there's gonna be all kinds of air quality testing that's gonna have to be done.
But you just haven't done it over the years.
Not that I, not since I've been here now.
Okay, so of, of course they're gonna do it now, but is that something that needs to be done going forward? Like, do they need to come in here, test the air and make sure that there is no, you know, small particles or anything like that going on here? Because now this is gonna affect the public, not just what, what, what we're building.
From what I have read and reading through all the paperwork that we have, it, it's a strict rule, it's a very strict rule that they have to follow when they do this. They have to do air quality monitoring every day in, in the upstairs and the downstairs. But if we're gonna be in the building, say, they have to test that air quality every day.
Yeah, but that, that, you know, and I know that has to be done every day now, one and four, but these are old buildings. Okay, they need to be tested throughout all the buildings to ensure that this is not something that's gonna crop up again.
Well, well, asbestos, unless you mess with it, unless you touch it, it's, it's fine.
No, no, it's fine, but that, and that's what they said, okay? But like bacon, you know, bacon causes cancer, bacon doesn't cause cancer. It's, it's something that we need to be aware of and be conscious of.
Probably want to speak to McCabe Engineer and another environmental engineer about that, that's their expertise.
Or even come up with yourselves, if you want to do an air quality test every, so often every year in the building. We can always hire somebody to come in and do air quality test. I know they did it back here in this building a few, I would say about ten, ten years ago, somebody told me, because somebody has an odor that they smell. Oh, okay, and they, they did call some.
That they were using for the.
History room now, yes, and then, yes, exactly, and they did have somebody come in. Yeah, and they tested the air quality in the, in the library and it came back normal.
Yeah.
You know, it's way below the levels that they say, please.
Yeah, two quick questions. First, is McCabe one of your subcontractors?
No, they're, they're separate from us, they're, we don't, we don't deal with asbestos. We, we helped out to try to kind of move it along where we hired them and then build it as reversible because of the tile sensitive nature, but typically they are not our consultants.
Okay.
They're independent.
Is there, is there a reason McCabe isn't here today? Were they not able to come out?
I do not know.
We didn't invite them, not for any particular reason. We just invited them because A and I said that Joseph would be coming.
Okay, I just, my follow-up question is related to environmental, you know, kind of this in general is, you know, are we doing any other testing of lead testing or testing our pipes for asbestos or anything like that because of the age of the building? And, okay, that's generally my question.
Yes, I, I understand that they will be testing.
When McCabe come in, excuse me, they tested, they tested not only the towel on the floor, they went up in the ceiling, they, they took samples of the insulation on the piping up in the ceilings. I didn't see anything in the reports that they found any asbestos up in the ceiling.
Okay, so that's.
I mean, I know at our main library, we have it in our corridor room, in the main library, we have that, but it's old.
Yeah, that's not like what I'm referring to, something like that, you know, was that gonna be impacted by the construction, are there gonna be?
No, not, they're not in there.
No, we do have some demolition in existing bathrooms and from that report, McCabe said the only concern is where the walls have not been touched since that original building was built. So out in the main space, a lot of that is accessible, so it would have been abated at some time previously. This is why they weren't shocked that they didn't find it. And, and again, that's underneath for the carpet, you don't know if it was abated at some point and there was no record on it, you know, from the time.
So could they possibly find more in the bathroom once they deconstruct?
There are a few in the sheds because those are, have been concealed basically since the building was built.
And I guess that's, that's kind of my question though, are we doing that additional testing and follow-up for places that I guess may be impacted?
I, my understanding is that yes, that they are, that they will.
They were trying to, if they could, otherwise when it gets demoed, if it's exposed, they would come back and.
And do the testing once.
Yeah, then it's more.
But if they find it, then they have to be, so if they, if they find it, they, so this can't all be done now, so if they come one time?
Well, so there is, in phase one, which is upstairs, we don't have this issue. In phase two, we discussed possibly demoing that section of wall, but we don't want to do that now and expose it because then you'd have to pay.
That, that makes sense, okay, I was just curious how that works.
Okay, now, the person or persons or company or whatever that started this project, that wasn't discussed with them, or they didn't bring that up? Something called errors and omissions, I want to know.
Right, so we're the architect, that would not be an error and omission because this is not something that.
Well, somebody made an error and, to be perfectly honest, there's an error here and the error is over two hundred thousand dollars. Now, I know it's not a lot of money, I mean, you could, can you, can you have him give an address and he can just write you a check?
Errors and omissions is when typically you would have to pay twice for something that, you know, if, if there was a mistake, something was.
Well, this is a big mistake.
It's not a mistake because even if it was in the bid, you would have had to pay this amount of money previously.
If it was in the bid, I would expect it. And if it was in the bid, there'd be an alternate bid with that bid to take into, this is what's gonna happen if, okay?
Were you talking about allowance or?
Allowance, whatever bid, whatever you want. The fact of the matter is, is now we have a problem. Right now, you're asking me for eighty thousand dollars for this section and another eighty thousand for another section. Not you, I apologize. But I, I, I got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in here and to be honest with you, I wasn't expecting it. So that's why I'm asking questions.
I understood that.
And to be honest with you, I'd like to talk to the people who put this all together and go, hey dude, what's going on? But that's all right, it's only what I was told by a councilman, it's only seventy four thousand dollars.
All right, so I have a question.
All right.
That's correct.
I didn't say it.
So, no, you didn't say.
Is there a? We had a carpet company come to pull up the carpet. That's part of.
That, that was part of the, so the contractor, they were doing their demolition for phase one.
Right.
So they ripped the ceilings down, they were ripping out the carpet to strip all the existing materials that had to be removed and that's when they turned around.
So did everybody go into this project going, there could be possibly asbestos in this building? Was that a consideration? Because it's, it's built in the sixties. So you would think that.
It's a possibility.
Okay, but was that thought about when we did, when you guys did your design, when we hired? But I, again, I'm just kind of like, it's almost seems like some people are surprised that there was asbestos in this building. It's built in the sixties. So that's what I'm confused about is that, you know.
It could have been abated, it could have been abated one of the times that other carpet was installed. There'd be no way of knowing that until the carpet tile was pulled up.
Or the other thing, even if you rip up the existing carpet, if it's in good condition, you put the new carpet directly over it.
I mean, we did, we did have a discussion about asbestos in the building, one, at one of our meetings, I do remember. And I remember we said, if anywhere, it's gonna be like in the, on the piping. Nobody, we never mentioned the flooring because the, the carpet has been replaced so many, oh, three times, I think it was in, in, in the main library, so I don't think, everybody just bring up the tile and, you know, put the new, new tiles, new carpet tiles down.
So as part of the architectural design plan, all that stuff, when you're looking at a building that's old, you don't put in the possibility of, you know, when you're getting prices from contractors, because you guys have been, aren't you the construction managers also?
Well, we are on site, not a construction manager, but we are involved during the construction. So it's two different things because we run the project meetings, we're there, observations every couple of weeks.
Right, so again, that, that's fine, but that's what I'm talking about, the oversight is your company. So again, there was no discussion, and none of this changes what we're doing, I'm just, I'm just trying to find out myself.
I'm sure there wasn't.
Was there discussions that this building is over sixties, is from the sixties? And we need to maybe, do you take precaution when you're gonna pull up carpet has possibly asbestos? Or you just go, well, we're gonna pull it up and if it happens, then we deal with it after, is that the process?
No, we wouldn't typically put an allowance in for the contractor to remove asbestos because usually that's done by a separate abatement company.
Right, right.
So as a library, you would possibly keep a, a bit of money off to the side as a contingency in case you hit that. But it's not something we would put in a bid to the contract.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm just, again, to me, it's just kind of like, it's almost like there wasn't really a concern of a building from the sixties that there was possibly.
There was discussion of it, but again, we're not cutting through the floor, we're not making openings in the floor, it's, it's really cosmetic.
So if we were doing something like that, then it would probably be more.
Be more investigation and, you know, there was discussion of a possible elbow and insulation in the chase.
That's, that's fine, I, I, again, I'm just trying to find out the scope of all this.
Now, when you pick up the floor.
Well, can we see if there are, if anybody else has a question, right, so, thank you.
Yeah, I do, I want to look forward. And so during phase one, for example, how is this going to be done? Is the library, is, is the, is the bottom floor going to remain open while this work is being done?
And that is a very good question.
And if so, how are people protected from the upstairs, what's going on?
Initially, that is a very good question. Initially, we were told that yes, that the abatement could take place and the, the one floor could remain open and they would do continuous air quality testing. But in discussion, in further discussion, it became apparent that it was going to be slightly, it was going to be less expensive. And our thinking was that it was just going to be safer and send a better message to the community that the library, when the abatement is being done, and we've been told that the abatement will take two weeks to be done, that that building will be completely closed. So there will be no public, no staff, nobody in that building except for the qualified people. I have learned a lot about asbestos removal, I certainly am no expert, but I understand that McCabe then is the company that works directly with the state to follow, you know, all of the requirements that are, that are needed.
So once phase one is done and it should take a couple of weeks, do we go into phase two immediately at that point?
No, they do, they do phase one and then they start construction. They continue renovation upstairs. They get that completely done, then they move what is being moved from the down, the lower level upstairs. And then, then at that point, then the entire building closes again for two weeks for the abatement to take place downstairs.
So in the initial phase, the building would be closed for the duration of the hazmat removal.
The two weeks, yeah.
For the two weeks, then it opens up again.
Yes.
And then it closes down when they do the same for phase two.
Yes, I guess, yeah, any other?
Yeah, yes. So when we started this process, we had the bid evaluation, right? And you had the different scenarios.
Right, are we talking about the bid for the renovation or the bid for the?
No, for the renovation.
Oh, yeah, for, that, that was awarded to G Meyer.
Right, no, I'm, I'm trying to pull it up. And so we had alternate, we had also, you had your base bid, your alternate one, alternate two, alternate three, right? Where does this eighty thousand fall within that?
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
No, that changes the scope of work that the contracted, contractor's doing. So as the, the extent of your renovation, so the base bid is the smallest amount of renovation and then there's other areas that you add with, you know, with those alternates. But the asbestos removal is not part of any of those alternates.
Okay, so, you know, my concern is safety first, right? It was in the library, but basically you're telling us, we gotta eat this eighty thousand, no matter what.
It's more, it's a.
It's more.
Eighty thousand.
It's per.
Right, yeah.
And just to be completely clear, it is, it is eighty thousand two hundred for phase one, eighty thousand two hundred for phase two. And then it is also, because you need to have oversight, it is twenty eight thousand eight hundred and thirty for that complete oversight that is needed. So, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big.
All right, and our concern is safety first, all right? We need this for the public, but it's just, it just seems like such a, something that we should have really considered from the very beginning.
Understood, and I think, because we're also planning work in this building, which is why, you know, we're suggesting that you investigate prior instructions.
Right, yes, so I'm curious, and maybe this was answered and I apologize. Do we know that there is asbestos downstairs or are we just assuming that because it's upstairs that it's downstairs as well?
I, they, they tested.
Yeah, they, they already tested.
It's just the old part of the original building. It's not the whole first floor and it's not the whole ground floor.
So now.
It's just the original part of the building.
So now, the next question is like for, for here, I don't, I obviously, I don't think it's going to be in fire garden. But how would it be tested here without physically removing any of the carpet, you know, to have to?
Well, that's, again, that's, McCabe would do that, they, environmental engineer, and they would remove sections.
Okay, so, so you basically have to test, you know, either.
Yeah, in a control that, you know, I don't know exactly how they do the control, but.
Yeah, but that is a good question because we've been told that, yes, the testing can take place. But then, and then they test the air quality and, you know, once nothing else is disturbed, then it's okay. Well, we're not looking to do anything right this moment, but obviously there's going to be work done here, so we. Yeah, so we would like to have that done before, so it's, it doesn't come as any kind of surprise.
Ms. Massey, I'm just wondering if Shran has something, I'm not sure, but I know, because you.
No, I've been listening, I, I read through the, the paperwork that was sent over. I mean, I, again, I think I mentioned in the past, I've had to deal with asbestos a lot because, you know, again, it's on houses as well. We've had people come out and talk to me about it, it's something that has to be done, right? There's not much, no questions for me, if this is something we need to do with the safety hazard. And our situation seems better than, something I was reading about, I think a library in Justicataway or somewhere that needs to be closed for a year now. Because of a similar situation where they don't have the money and the budget for it right now.
Yeah, and I think, I think this is, this is, it's a, it's a shock to all of us, it's a surprise. But I think that our community can be very grateful to this particular board for taking care of this problem. And then there will be a record that abatement has taken place. So if they're doing any further renovation down the road, which I'm sure will happen at some point, at least they will be able to say abatement was, was done and thank you to the board in two thousand twenty four. Because it is, it's unfortunate and Shran said, you know, it can be, it can. Because it is, it's unfortunate, and Shran said, you know, it can be, it can be any place, it can be any place. Um, so we do have a motion on the floor, uh. I believe we have finished, um, for discussion, uh, so could we have a roll call vote, please?
Uh, roll call for resolution A, um.
To approve a contract with hazmat diagnostic for the removal of asbestos on the upper level of the main library. Phase one in the amount of eighty thousand two hundred dollars.
Yes.
Ms. Kraus?
Yes, you're, we're only doing, are we doing one at a time?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Ms. Mead?
Yes.
Ms. Pam?
Yes.
Mr. Duboiswell, yes. Mr. Patel? Shran, can you?
Yes, yes, sorry, I couldn't mute.
Sorry, uh, Ms. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
No.
And Ms. Massey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Alright, the next resolution that we have is to approve a contract with hazmat diagnostic. Uh, for the removal of asbestos on the lower level of the main library, phase two, in the amount of eighty thousand two hundred dollars. Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Do we have any, uh, que- further questions or discussion?
Yeah, we're gonna do, this is another floor.
Yes, this is another floor.
Okay, and they haven't tested this.
They have, they have, they have, and they have.
So in other words, complete, how about all the equipment and the people that work here? How about all of the books, the bookshelves, the cleaning? My, my concern is safety, exactly what was told, okay? I'm not, I'm not against this, what I'm against is, is that it's, it comes to us at the eleventh hour. And to be perfectly honest. Uh, I have another construction company and another architect that I stopped something. For a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. Because of asbestos, and I stopped it because they didn't know about it. And they found it, and now they wanted me to pay for it, and I'm not paying for it, and I stopped the project. Now, this, me, honestly, you wanna do it, go right ahead, I know you're gonna get the votes. But to be honest, no, it's taxpayers' money. Taxpayers have the right to know, the people that did the job, or the people that bid on the job. They didn't do their job, they didn't take and tell us about this, which is fine, so. Whatever you wanna vote, my vote is no, you can put that down now, no.
Are there any other questions or comments? Alright, could we have a roll call vote, please?
You know, before you go.
Oh, yeah, please.
So your vote's no, we got them, right, so what do you propose we do? Stop the project?
No, I didn't say that, all I'm saying is, is that the first part of the project is fine. Okay, my problem is simple, and it's not the project, it's the people that bid on the project. They've been on the project.
And I understand that, but at this point in time, we need to be concerned about the public, okay, we need to be concerned.
That's my biggest concern right now.
It needs to be done, because we need, we need the people to come to the library and be, feel safe and be safe when they come here.
Right, I agree with you, and I'm voting yes, but the things I'm, and I want this on the record, the things I'm disappointed about. Is that, again, this was gone into this project with, and almost to me, seems like there was not really a big concern about asbestos. On a building from nineteen sixty. We're here at this meeting with questions about all this, but we don't have the company here who's the experts in this. To answer our questions, I don't know why, and whatever the reason is, is fine, but I would have felt more comfortable. This gentleman's doing his best, it's not knocking you, it's not your field, I know, but I would have been more comfortable if these people were here. To answer questions, it's not, it's not happening, and I'm I'm voting yes, but I'm just.
No, and I completely agree with you, they should be here for this meeting, right, but. And 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 be all the end all, we need to be concerned about the citizens of Edison Township and those who come to our library. Right, at this point, can we stop everything? We still can't put them in the library, they can't go back to the library.
How many people that work in our library right now? That are not, are are gonna be inconvened by not allowing that to work in, to come into the building, how about the cleaning of the building? Now that we have this problem, we have to clean the building, we have to clean every book, every bookshelf. The fact of the matter is, is that was this discussed, not by, not by this board. Not by our administration, was any consideration done? And I'm sorry, sir, you're the only one I can pick on.
So I'm I'm gonna interrupt for just a second, let me just ask, all things being equal, pretend we were, we can rewind time. If you had an inkling that there might be asbestos, what would you, like, is this, how do you normally proceed? Or how would you proceed?
And if you wanna, if you wanna be sure, then you have.
Before this ever started, when we were just giving us.
So just like for this project here, now, because of of what you're experiencing there, to be sure, you have to hire an event, environmental engineer. You have to spend the money for testing upfront, which may or may not come back as, um, you know, positive for asbestos. And that's the only way to know, and even then, you open a wall that they didn't have access to, there's still the chance that, you know.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong. This money, essentially, essentially the same money we're talking about, would be spent that way or this way, it's just pointing out later.
It makes sense, I'm saying.
I I just, I just wanna know, have we known about this from the beginning? Would there be, would there have been a way for us to avoid, uh, like, maybe, like, not this entire cost, but maybe to minimize this cost? Would there have been a way to do things differently that we wouldn't be spending as much money as we are now?
Not if you move ahead with the project, no, um, the only, the only other.
Because that I think is our bottom line here, could we have saved.
In the front end or the back end.
And you got, you got seven bids from asbestos removal contractors, so.
And we also had many bids at the beginning of this beforehand, and I I don't know if you remember, I apologize for interrupting. Were any of those bids that we got at the beginning, did any of them mention asbestos, because we had multiple professional companies bidding. Surely, one of them should have, if this is their, you know, like, if this is something that they normally would do. Would have included this, or one would hope, if this is something, if you understand where I'm going with this. So it's not something that they, that amongst all of the bids we had, that not one person came up with, hey, is there asbestos here? Then I think we can safely, safely say, or at least hopefully safely say, that this is not something that was on their radar. Is it, should it be on their radar, possibly, would it be wonderful if it was on their radar, absolutely? But if this is not the standard, if this is not, you know, then we can't ask them to go above and beyond, because that would be the ideal.
Right, and I think we have to keep in mind that any of those construction companies that would be putting in bids to do work. They don't do this inspection, you always have to hire an environmental specialist to do asbestos testing. Yes.
I just wanna, like, a couple of things on that note, typically, and this is just from my experience in the town, typically. You know, and I think just going forward, we may wanna consider doing more of due diligence, especially related to environmental items, or any renovations going forward.
Absolutely.
Or if we're not doing renovations, because I think we all understand, at least at this point, to test for asbestos, again, if it's covered, we're fine. To test for it, you have to uncover, and that may open up doors, but again, it prevents us running into things like this, where we have to deal with timing. And just to the point of the bids, the bid specs, did did you guys prepare the bid specs for this project? The bid specs are what lays out the project, if if our Cory and I, Vino, did not put asbestos in their bid specs, no contractor would mention asbestos in their bid. Just, just as a point of clarification, it's we are the ones putting the bid specs together, we would be the ones saying whether or not, because theoretically, we could have said. In this bid, you need to subcontract out someone to do this environmental testing and remediation, so that's something, just to be mindful of going forward. We should think about this due diligence process more thoroughly, especially now that we run into this, again, price would be the same no matter what, it's just timing.
It's timing, it's timing, yes.
Well, I'm just gonna say, I think, put it in the bid, you would be exactly in the same position you were in then.
It would still be.
Because they would have said. Yes, but but the bid, the total cost would be the same, it would be higher, but it would be in the bid. And then, not for nothing, if if they didn't use that money in the bid. We'd get something back at the town from the, not from the town, but for the town, for the taxpayer.
So I think Kat has an excellent suggestion that going forward, the township and the library should know to incorporate this into our requests for bids. That we should ask them to.
Either a separate bidding process or part of the bid, whatever it may be.
Like, in in event of, or, and and even, you know, as a precaution, have us test our buildings. Prior to any kind of work that we're looking to do. And that we will know.
If I may say, on the next board, board meeting, there will be, um, a, uh. Resolution to approve a contract with McCain for testing for this building, so we know that. At the beginning of before, we're not ready to go to bid yet, but we're, we're close, and then we'll know. Um, given the date, this building is early seventies.
Yeah, same.
Who knows, but also the same thing, there's been four times of carpeting up and down, and you don't know until you. Legitimately take up the carpeting.
These tiles are are good, and they're safe, and they're fine until they're not, and there's no telling what daddy changed.
Yeah.
Big question.
Yes.
Is the township that owns a lot of these buildings, I mean, the library, these buildings are owned by the township, and many buildings are owned by the township. Does township has, uh, any procedure for this asbestos testing before the renovations, before anything? The the township does for other areas of this, so is there a rule for the township? For all the buildings township owns, rather than a small, I mean, it it's a subsection of the library, a subsection of the like. Township, but what if the other buildings township is doing, is there any major rule for that, I mean, any things for that?
Well, who's the landlord?
What landlord is the township?
Township.
The township owns the building.
There's a problem, there's a problem with the building, then the town dues you back.
If I can respond.
If you would like, I could see the township respond.
So, I I will say, Alan did reach out to the township in regards to the, or Marco did, thank you.
We did, we did try.
So there was a conversation about insurance and things like that, in terms of. I mean, there's no strict policy as terms of, you know, in terms of remediation, because again. Had you guys not been pulling up the carpet tiles, there wouldn't be an asbestos issue, so it's so, it's so nuanced. You can't really put a rule in place, and it goes back to similarly, you know, not to put Mr. Romano under the bus, but with the board of med, their projects are done. Similarly, where you have to look at your own environmental and things like that, so that's just how the process.
Three hundred and seventy five thousand.
So I hope that answers your question.
I can tell you exactly.
The question is, like, we say, what is wrong, we should check the environment, we should.
Yeah, really.
Wait, hold on, I can't.
And that's my question is, do, how do we foresee unexpected things happening?
I, I think, honestly, that that may be something, a larger conversation with the councilwoman too, because really, that would. Well, really, really, it would come down to, it would have to be an ordinance or a resolution to require that, but again, it's so nuanced. I don't even know how you would put together a requirement like that, it could be something, you know, I'll follow up with, um, building inspections and see if there's anything on that side. But it would really be the records of what the landlord or property owner has too, now, so it's it's nuanced, but I definitely will get into that and see if there's anything.
That's what my question is, if it is my house, and the owner pays for it, and if it is the township wants these buildings. The township should pay for it, because it's unexpected thing happening.
Well, it would be.
We can't get the money that they owe us.
Right, it would be.
I'm sorry, I, I apologize.
It would be very, yes, if the township would put some money, just sort of, could pay. It would be, it would be a collaborative, friendly thing, if the township could.
You said friendly?
I did, I did, with a little bit of money, um, towards, because as you're right, you're right, the township does own the library buildings. They own the library buildings, uh, but and you're, yes, you do, you did ask, um. And and they did respond, you did get a response that you could, actually, if you have access to it, you could. You could, um, let everyone know what the response was.
Um, the response actually, if it's okay, technically went back to to use and to take the request. Um, and so this is what the township responded to us. Uh, from a procurement standpoint, the township cannot absorb the costs of the remediation, and that. Pertains to a capital improvement project for the library as an autonomous body. That goes into the scope of work to which they have gone out to bid and awarded a contract to a vendor. Who would proceed according to any contractual obligations. Additionally, the insurance policy would not cover findings like asbestos, as it is a pre-existing condition. Sounds like my diabetes. I would defer to the contractor or project manager, as this would have been part of the initial due diligence procedure, given the age of the building. It appears that this would also be a change order to the project, if the library, uh, wishes, they can contact me with any questions. Uh, respectively, Sonia, uh, it came, uh, from, uh, the township's.
That sounds like a lawyer's. I'm lawyers, I gotta be honest.
What's, what's your take, what's your take on this, what's on that response?
Well, I think he's absolutely right, that a lawyer. You know, it's a thing, because there's an issue about the autonomous body, but then they're correct, we are an autonomous body. Uh, but when they say, given the, the township built the building, right, so when it was built. Um, it was the township that built it, so it is owned by the township, um, so we haven't, haven't been asked to look into this particular issue yet. Um, but I certainly can, the board is so inclined, or the, you know, to to have me do that, because. Um, I think there's a line there, and I'm not entirely sure that that lawyer's response was, would be the same as what my response would be. Based upon the, I think it would take a little bit of research, like I said, this just came up, I did review all the agreements, I'm in complete agreement with. You know, what's been said so far, because if you look at this carpet, for example, no one can tell you, maybe Robbie can. But if I pull up that carpet, do you know if I'm gonna find some floor or tile?
Concrete.
Concrete, see, you know, no one else knows, uh, but, you know, so. When they started to pull up that tile, I don't know if they had a clue that there was any, uh, asbestos, and and they also would, would, someone was saying is. Absolutely correct, if it's in a tile, and and those tiles didn't crack, break, or whatever, and become, was called friable, which means that the fiber would become airborne. Then there would have been no need for remediation, you could have pulled up the carpet and just completely put down new, uh. New, new, new carpet, um, by the way, the reason why I know so much, I did asbestos litigation when I got out of those. So, so, you know, I don't think that there, I really don't think that there was any ball drop here, this is not something where. You know, um, it could have been foreseen, uh, you did look at the age of the building, you know, going forward, it is probably a good idea to. Have this a separate meeting, a separate resolution, where you're gonna contract someone in advance. To see if there's asbestos there, in a way where you don't have to then do remediation, so, for example, where it's in the boiler room. They know there's asbestos there, because they know the pipes or whatever, maybe they made one go with pin prick and tested it. But as long as it's contained, just like with the tiles, so when you find it on on the wrapping of the outside of the pipes. Um, that's what inspectors usually do, keep the heat in, that that they keep things from, from, uh, you know, from burning, and and you've got a fire. As long as that, if that's, that's wrapped and contained, you don't have to do any remediation, if you're gonna then remove those pipes. Then that's when you need to do the remediation, you're gonna be taking that stuff off the pipes, and the fibers and the asbestos. Are gonna become friable and be in the air, and if they're inhaled, that's when it becomes dangerous, which is why you do need to, it is a good idea to take everybody out of the library.
That's why I'm thinking.
The buildings are built in nineteen sixties, we had worry about asbestos or anything, at what stage that the state mandated is, uh. Asbestos testing and NY, engineers have to check in, is this before nineteen eighties? Is this before nineteen eighties, before nineteen ninety billion, any idea?
I don't think so, there's any unless they find it.
All right. Okay, I, I can, so in the eighties is when it started to become a problem.
Right.
Uh, that's when, and then you'll just see, when you turn on your TV, that the people, the law firms that do uh, mesothelioma and asbestos litigation. It started in the eighties, and I will tell you, this stuff was in everything, it was in breaks. It's in, it's definitely, it's some of your homes that are built before nineteen seventy, it's in there someplace. Um, you know, it's not. It, you know, plus you live in New Jersey, so there's other stuff to worry about, but, you know, it was in breaks, it was in, it was in, you know, almost everything, because it is a very good uh, fire retardant. Um, so, you've been exposed to it, if you've been, if you've gone to the train stations, you know, it's there, um, you know, it's, it's on the railroads, it's, it's, it's in all of the old buildings, Grand Central Station, all of that.
If they were a technician in the Navy, they were there.
Yes.
I know.
We, we have a pair of oven nets made out of that.
Probably, yeah, yeah, probably. All right, so we have the motion, we have the second, we have the discussion, could we have roll call?
Oh, resolution B.
Yes.
Ms. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Mead.
Yes.
Ms. Pam.
Yes.
Mr. De Vasquale.
Yes.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
No.
And Ms. Massey.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, so then our last resolution, yes, our last resolution is to approve a contract with McCabe Environment Services to provide asbestos abatement design, abatement monitoring, and contractor oversight services, and air sample analysis as required for the plan, uh, planned asbestos abatement project at the main library in the estimated cost of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars.
So neat.
All right, do we have a second?
Same.
Thank you, do we have any questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Kraus.
Yes.
Ms. Mead.
Yes.
Ms. Pam.
Yes.
Mr. De Vasquale.
Yes.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Leary.
Yes.
Mr. Romano.
Sure, yes. Yes, it's air quality, I wanna make it, and he's right. I'm just. Testing and making it happen, yeah, fine.
Ms. Massey.
Yes.
The motion's carried.
Motion carried, thank you, uh, thank you, that's good, then we can notify the company, all right. So now we are moving on to public comment.
Before that, I can just, I just wanna let the board know, because we, we, once we give them to this, the um, company needs two weeks, by state law, to file all their paperwork and all that stuff. And then, um, we will close for approximately two weeks, so we don't know the exact dates. Uh, but all of the staff will just be working at the other branches, uh, and on the bookmobile. Um, so, um, we'll, you know, reschedule, we can't, until we know exact today, we'll try to reschedule some of our programs that are, this, moving from one branch to the next branch, and I'll try to keep the board informed, so that they know the exact dates that we're, we're closing. Obviously, we're gonna be doing a big publicity about it, and we probably will shift the Sunday hours to here, um, which doesn't make a difference, we'll shift them here, instead of the main library, staff is already scheduled uh, to work, so with the beginning of August, I'm hopeful the first two weeks will be this, the last two weeks will be closed, we'll be able to be open again when school, uh, I think school starts June the fifth. I, I'm hopeful we'll be open back at the main library, uh, when school starts.
Good question, is the main library open now? Are you able to be open now?
Well, the second floor is, has been totally closed. No one goes up, I mean, I mean, we sometimes go up there to get something, but basically, no one goes upstairs. Um, that's the down, everything's downstairs.
I just wanna confirm that the downstairs is open, we are not closed, we're in business until those two weeks.
Yeah, and I will tell you, we're busier than ever.
So the, the lower level, um, the section that they found the asbestos, is that what closed off in the bucket?
No, because it was under the carpet, so they put that, they just put that back. They ripped, those tiles were not damaged on, on the first floor. But what they did was, where they pulled the carpet tiles up, they found the same tile and they tested the tile. So those things are not broken, but they, because they needed to go around the floor and test all over the first floor.
And they went in the closets, and they went in the closet, pretty much where nobody goes, you know, that we have off limits, they went there and did it, the test, and they didn't do that where the public was and stuff like that.
Right, thank you, uh, all right, so, yes, please.
Well, I, I first came here, I, you know, I was worried about the patrons, and I'm worried about workers, but I don't think they have a strong enough union here. They had a strong enough union, they would not be working through asbestos and all that stuff that's in the building, point blank, and the same course, something's under a rug does not mean it does not affect you, because a lot of people have underlying diseases that a little bit asbestos will get, and doing stuff for two weeks, and then asbestos is down on the books and all the rest of that stuff, so who's cleaning that, who's doing that, back and forth, then I don't normally agree with this guy, Tony. I know, but today, but today, I have to agree with him. Every building in this town has a change order. Like, if not even a city, the building's got asbestos in it, what makes you think one does it? Because every building, you know, this is, this, this is like a, oh my, this town, just come over here, make as much as you want. Because we, you know, you get had this baby, we gonna add another two hundred thousand on, just to help you out along the way. I mean, I find, you know, highly crazy, and I also have to uh, agree with this Pam, okay, I have to agree with her also. You own the buildings in this town, and you mean to tell me that, I don't know what kind of unions or whatever they have in this town, that the air quality is not tested in all of these buildings at least once a year, there's something wrong with that, there's something wrong, to me, that means that you're just faking people out, you don't care about health, you really don't care about environmental issues, and if you sit around and you try to slice my mind and try to play like you do, you're not right, it, it's not true. Because I don't know, most of you may not know Jenny Townsend?
Okay.
Oh, Jenny.
Okay, I was, I learned from her, I learned from that, when they cared about things, when they actually cared about the environment, when they actually cared about the people. I still think it's, it's absolutely crazy that people, oh, we just got a little asbestos upstairs, uh, y'all come in, if a couple of crumbs fall down, it's okay. You know, y'all just work here, we're, we've got tons of people in here, that doesn't make any sense, at all, that makes me think that we, we're more, eh, nowadays, it's all about money, 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 it's never about people anymore, never. And, and you're, you're not saving anything, because if some of those people there, I've admitted, like, he said, there's asbestos everywhere, I know, I'm probably full of asbestos, because I'm a school teacher, I was from the school system, you know what I mean? Lisa probably has a lot of it, because in the schools, lots of it was built in New Jersey in the fifties, okay? But if somebody gets some type of problem, and they do have it, they can sue you guys and say, oh, well, they said it was upstairs, but guess what, like, he named that law firm, oh, they can get millions from you. Just the workers did, oh, I don't have enough for my retirement, oh, well, I got a little bug over here. Y'all, you, you know what I'm thinking, everything is about wasting money. You know what I'm thinking about the employees and the patrons and stuff, because I could just come in here and say, this is where I picked it up. This is where I picked up, that's the same, wherever that disease is, you know what I mean? And the lung camps, I could say, I picked it up here. You, it, it, that's not, to me, it's not cost effective, having people and having patients come in over there, and still having explained to me how you're gonna do that stuff, and have all the crumbs all over the books, the floors and everything, who's cleaning? At all, I'm, I'm just very upset behind the people.
So, I, I, I'll just say that, one of the things I looked for in the contracts was that, so that's, they are, there, there's state regulations about when you do expose this and send all those crumbs out, like you said, and they have to, they're cleaning, they're, 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 they have to clean that, and there's gonna be testing done after they clean that. So the dust on those books is gonna be tested, there shouldn't be any dust on them.
There's, that's the second floor, there's no books, there's no books upstairs, there's nothing upstairs, it's nothing, it's nothing.
It's been empty.
Everything is gonna be contained all the time.
Yes.
When you see the, the people in hazmat suits with, you know, the whole.
Yeah, I don't see the people on the first floor when they have a mask on.
When they come in to clean, see, right now, when they, when they come in to clean, that's what they're, they're, they're gonna section everything off. There's gonna be air handling vacuums and, and localized vacuums, so that they, that they're gonna get ninety percent of that, ninety whatever percent is gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna not let it get into the air. And it's something they let get into the air, they're gonna make sure, then they're gonna clean that through the air handling, et cetera. These people are gonna be dressed in hazmat suits, with oxygen masks, et cetera, so and it's all by the state as far as record, that's what, that's what we looked for, to make sure that you, and that's with the air quality test, that's why it's a separate contract than the air quality testing, and I was glad that it's a separate thing, because you don't have the same guy who's doing the work, saying, okay, you tested it and it's fine. We have a different contractor, there's a different contractor that's gonna test it, because you wanna make sure that there's not even a, the, the, and that's what the state, they can't be, you know, a speck of this stuff, they, they, you can't be, it's gotta be clean, it's gonna be like, clean, it's gonna be the cleanest it's ever been.
But if I'm leasing your property, I'm leasing your property, you're not responsible for the cleanup?
Well, as I said before, there's, I think there's an issue as to that, and it, I get direction, I'll look into it.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I'll do.
Yes, yes.
Uh, I would like to make a suggestion with the, with the bottom, um, we can maybe invest in some plastic and cover all our shelves downstairs, while this is being done up on the upstairs, um, as a precaution. I mean, I have to say, out of all the, seven of the contractors that I've dealt with that came in, what they explained to me, how that, how Dominic was just explaining how they're gonna handle, they were telling, there's not gonna be all this dust that everybody thinks is gonna be going downstairs. Um, the way they told me, you have to seal the whole up, that whole section that they're, they're working, how they have to seal it off, I mean, tape on the doors, around the, you know, around the seams, everything, any, if they find any cracks, they have to seal up every crack before they do anything, any kind of uh, removal and stuff like that, um, but I would, I, and I do appreciate everybody, and I can speak for a lot of my fellow employees here, they are very, gonna be very thankful that you're gonna close the library for the last two weeks, so I do thank everybody for that, and from everybody at the library, because I know, we're speaking with everybody with this going on, how everybody was feeling, and I do wanna say thank you, Alan, thank you, board, and you're doing.
Well, I said, we're not gonna be open.
Yeah, and Alan had told me that, when him and I were talking about it, and he wanted no way of opening. Even though every contractor there said we can't.
Even though every contractor.
They did, every contractor there said, because they opened that, they, I know you're saying, I'm just telling you what they told me, Fiona, I'm not. I'm glad that we're not gonna be in the building, Fiona, but I'm just telling you, every contractor that I talk to.
Yeah, are anybody, their relatives gonna meet in, the ones that say that's okay, I believe?
I, I don't know who their workers are, you know, but I, I would, I would like to make that suggestion, if we can invest maybe in some plastic and cover our shelves downstairs, just to prevent um, dust on the books.
I have no idea.
I'll put it on now.
I would think if the company says we need to do that, I mean.
Yeah, I think they need to take that.
Great suggestion, I'm just saying, check, I would check with the company, ask the question, do we need to do that, can you do that?
I mean, I could buy, I could buy plastic. I know, don't not need a board resolution.
Good suggestion, they'd like, oh, no.
Follow, you know.
We, we, you know, we, we, I, I'm glad that we're fine, look, you know, I'm gonna say this, at least no other board is gonna have to go through this for the library for that building again. Um, I think, the, a- as you know, the money, we would have either paid it before or paid it now, it's still the same amount. Going forward with this building, um, we're doing this, uh, the board will have a resolution at the next meeting, so we're doing that first, so we know whether we have it or not. Um, I think the idea of having air quality in the, in the three buildings is not a bad idea. Uh, we do know that the, um, water, at least for the main library, Edison Water Company comes in.
Every Tuesday, every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday, tests the water, make sure that that's okay, these are the two, I think, are on mental sex, and they don't do that. Uh, but I think that's something that we should probably think as we are doing more sustainability, um, and trying to just, in general, uh, make the buildings more environmentally uh, uh, safe. So, you know, we'll look into the, just air quality, water, um, if anyone else has any other suggestions or what, any, anything that, that you're, you're thinking of at the township, you know, we just, we, we will do that, I think that would be helpful. Dominic?
What's that? Contact the township and find out what their response is.
Yeah, no, it's good to take a look.
Is that a request from a board member?
No, 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 I was only making a joke.
Oh, only a joke.
Yes, it was.
Alan, I'm sure you thought of this, but talk to McCabe Environmental Services and see what they recommend, when, where it comes to, you know, plastic, or any other actions you might want.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll talk to them, see if there's any other precautions we need to do before or after, just so that we know in general, it doesn't hurt. We'll probably all watch fifty thousand YouTube videos on asbestos, so we know what to do before.
All right, are there any further trustee comments or questions?
Would you lose Anthony?
Luckily, we do not need to go into a closed session, do we have any further announcements? All right, our next regular meeting is going to be Tuesday, August thirteenth, at the Mina's Wolf Building. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, we have Joe, we have Lisa, all right, we are adjourned at eight eleven.